Madam President, I have seven o'clock.
Okay.
It is now seven o'clock, and I will call the meeting to order. Can I please get a roll call?
Vice President Anderson.
Here.
Counselor Blakely.
Here.
President Duncan.
Here.
Counselor Forbeck.
Here.
Counselor Keys.
Here.
Counselor Levy.
Here.
Counselor Pruschel.
Here.
All counselors are present.
Can everyone please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and just as we are.
There are no special orders of the day or announcements?
Just a moment. Thank you so much for that, Clerk Treasuris Stotler. Can everyone please join me in a moment of silence to remember and honor Congressman John Lewis, an icon of the civil rights movement? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. There are no public hearings, so on to item five, public comments.
We have reached the point in the agenda for citizens to speak to the council about issues that are coming before us or may come before us in the future. Council members may not act on any requests at this meeting, but may refer speaker to staff for assistance. We ask that you please hold your comments to three minutes or less and refrain from personal attacks of any kind. Speakers are asked to complete a public comment form or submit an email prior to the meeting. Madam Clerk, were there any public comments submitted prior to the meeting?
Yes, I have two that I will read in full and then two that I will give mention. On July 7th, I received a public comment from Larry White. Dear members of the Beloit City Council, I have lived in the city of Beloit since 1984, but this is the first time I have submitted a public comment. I'm writing to you now because I have become convinced that in Beloit and elsewhere, it is necessary to reallocate portions of the police budget to other activities that benefit the city more than policing does. I have great respect for officers as individuals. The men and women who go into police work are, for the most part, good and decent people who want to serve their community. I'm thinking of people like Charlie Tubbs, Chief Zabolski, Ryan Flanagan, and Talimarie Cornell. Unfortunately, the nature of policing has changed dramatically over the past 40 years, and that culture shift has transformed the individuals who do police work. You know as well as anyone that police departments have become militarized, that some police officers develop a warrior mentality and sometimes use excessive force. You also know that we ask police officers to do too much when we call upon them to handle situations that do not require a law enforcement officer. As members of the Beloit City Council, I ask you to take the necessary steps to divert funds from the current police budget to community-based services that promote safety, education, health, and homeownership. I also ask you to stand up courageously against police associations and other organizations that oppose cutting the size and funding of police departments. With appreciation for the work you do and best regards, Larry White, 1711 Emerson Street. The second public comment was received on Saturday, July 18th, from Judy Warner. She says, "I will start off by quoting the number-one infectious disease specialist in our country. Dr. Fauci implores state and local leaders to be as forceful as possible with mask orders." CNN Health, July 17, 2020. "I saw that Rock County has just mandated the wearing of masks for all county buildings. I would implore you, Beloit City officials, to follow suit and require a mask mandate here in Beloit to include all public spaces and businesses, including gyms, churches, all stores, public gatherings, and specifically all bars and restaurants. Dane County has issued a mask mandate to begin Monday, July 20. If you go over the state line to Illinois, masks are a must. Let's get ahead of the curve. This is about remaining healthy and well versus ill or dead." Thank you, Judy Warner. And then I just want to make mention of two emails that I received as a part of what appears to be a chain email support for Rock County Mask Ordinance. Received positive response from Alice Lamont. Rock County needs an ordinance, support for Rock County masks. And then Barbara Kavanaugh, she's worried about schools opening as well and agrees that we must control this local outbreak before schools open or anything else. That concludes what I received in writing.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that did not sign up that wish to address the council this evening? Okay, can you please come forward, please, and state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Greg Hatley. I'm the owner of 615 and the new Hatleys Pub Downtown. My address at home is 1710 Morgan Terrace, Beloit, Wisconsin.
Go ahead.
You mean I can start now?
Yeah, you can.
Well, I'm here. I didn't know that people that I was here to discuss about weren't going to be here. I think I would rather do this when they're here. I mean, it doesn't do me much good to get up here and say what I'm going to say, and there's two of you there.
No, Mr. Hatley, we are, they're all.
You're live and on television, and the council will be in that computer there. They can see you.
Okay. No, never done this before. Well, I'm going to make this as short as I can make it. The last time that I met in front of everybody here, I was very appreciative to the fact that you guys let me get my liquor license early so I could open up my business, Hatleys Pub Downtown. It was very important that I had the license so I could order all the supplies that I needed, everything that I needed. Well, I got that, and I got it open, and I was open for five hours. Five, five hours I was open. So somewhere along the line, somebody didn't relay to us as businesspeople that there was even a chance that we were going to close. I can't imagine anybody on this panel didn't have any kind of an inkling or an idea where they could have popped their head into our business and said, hey, you might want to hold off. There's something going down at the county or the state, it was the state at that time, I believe, saying that you were going to have to close in five hours. So we did. We closed in five hours, and we sat and looked at $25,000 worth of merchandise that I didn't need to use because nobody let me know that I didn't need to order it because I was only going to be open for five hours for three months. But we closed. And we waited, and we waited, and we wondered, and we wondered if we were going to stay in business. And if anybody cared if we stayed in business. So the COVID close comes about. We deal with it. We make it through. How? I don't know. We closed in an orderly fashion. We didn't raise any protests. We didn't do anything. We did what we were told. So after I close, all my staff goes away. I don't know if you guys hire any staff, but I'm pretty sure that it's not real easy for you, just like it isn't for me, to hire competent people to work for you. And it isn't. So we reopen. We finally get through. But there's always the haze, the wondering. Are you going to close us again? You guys don't let us know what's going on. You guys meet here, you come up with your, you know, ideas about what we should do. When's the last time anybody popped their head in one of our businesses? Said, hey, this is what we're thinking about doing. Is there anything that I can do for you? Because that's what you guys are here for, right? To help us. I think that's what you're all here for. That's what you say when you run through your office, that you're here for us. Ain't nobody been here from here for me. Somebody could have popped their head. You have. You have. Nobody popped in and said, you know what? We're thinking about closing down, overstepping the county that has the jurisdiction over the Health Department. We don't, you guys don't have the jurisdiction over the Health Department here. There is no designated Health Department in Beloit, Wisconsin. It's in Janesville, Wisconsin, through the county. Just because you can shut somebody down for something, don't mean you should. Leave it in the hands of the people that take care of that, that specialize in that and know what they're doing. I've been in contact with Amanda Wilder probably more than I've been in contact with anybody, checking, saying, hey, look, what's going on? So we had an issue with COVID. That didn't start in my place. It was all downtown. I'm not here to name names. I'm here representing myself. I had an issue with somebody coming into my place that worked somewhere else that had COVID. So you know what I did? I called Amanda Wilder, told her what I was going to do, and I said, I'm going to shut my place down on my own. I don't need you guys to tell me to shut down or stay open. It's not your job to do that. That's my job. But you know what I did? I shut down. I was responsible. I paid people to come in and sanitize my place, and I closed down, all right? So then I had another issue with my other restaurant, 615 Club. We had an issue in the kitchen. We had an issue with one of our servers. You know what we did? We closed down. Nobody told us to. And we had everybody tested, and we found out who had it and who didn't. And we found out they had it, it was positive, and guess what we did? We shut it down. We sanitized it. We did everything we could possibly do. And it cost me about $38,000. And that's being generous. Was in communication with the county. Amanda Wilder knows that I'm a responsible business owner to react to the community. What else was I supposed to do? There was nothing else I was supposed to do. So now we got to deal with it. Bringing your customers back, the faith, showing them that you did the right thing. But unfortunately, because of political views, everybody knows what my political view is. I've never made it, I've never once denied it. I'm a conservative Republican, and I'm proud to say it. Doesn't mean I'm wrong. Doesn't mean my input doesn't mean any more than anybody else's. But unfortunately, we had Sherri Blakely decide that she's going to put on her Facebook page, her personal Facebook page.
Madam President, Madam President, this is Councilman Levy. Point of order here. I think the speaker has gone well over the three minutes, and I think you have allowed him that. But I think we're getting ready to go down the road where we're going to have personal attacks.
There's no going to be, Kevin, there will be no personal attacks. Now, please let me finish.
I think we should end this portion of.
I'm sure you do think I should end this portion.
He has exceeded his three minutes.
Nobody told me I had a three-minute limit when I came here.
I said it in the beginning, so what I'll have them do, thank you, Counsel Levy, is to wrap up. You have exceeded the time, Greg, so if you would, just wrap up really quick.
I'll wrap it up as quick as I possibly can. On her personal page, she put, does anybody know what happened? Does anybody know what happened with the 615 Club? I heard rumors of COVID. Now, this lady is on the city council. Please don't shut me down. Please don't shut me down. Kevin, I know what your point is. Kevin, I know what your point is.
Right, but I believe that the president set the standard when we started the discussion that there will be no personal attacks on council people.
I'm not making an attack. Have I attacked anybody yet? Have I attacked anybody yet, Kevin? Listen to me. Have I attacked? Kevin, you're supposed to be here for me.
Just a moment, please. Just a moment.
When you start mentioning individuals' names, that is inappropriate for public comments.
She ran for office, she ran for office on her name?
Just a moment, please.
Greg, time out.
Clerk Treasuris, can you please respond to that?
So in a point of order, you were a little bit late coming into the meeting, okay? So the president did say.
Well, I have two businesses to run, so I tried to get around that.
Right, and I mean, I understand that. I understand that you have things that you need to say. But she did say, we ask that you hold your comments to three minutes or less and refrain from personal attacks of any kind.
Attacking anybody.
So can you tell your story?
She attacked me.
Can you tell your situation to the council without naming, without naming any more names?
How about that? How about that?
And wrap up, save the next 30 seconds.
Just for a point of reference, we are over time. So Greg, if you just want to make just one.
There's nothing else to go. There's nobody in here.
Because.
Right, but I've allowed you to go over, but we set a precedence.
All of the comments the same, and so we had every meeting set that time standard. And they have patiently.
Right.
I didn't stop the.
I appreciate. I'll finish up, okay? Can I have, can I have one minute? Can I have one minute?
Just wrap up, Greg, because we are, and seriously. We did that out of respect for you because there is no other, we did have other comments, but they were all at a certain point. They didn't go over the timeframe, and yours did, so.
I don't appreciate the city council's supposed to help me. I don't appreciate somebody that doesn't agree with my side of politics coming down, making rumors about my livelihood, my business. It's very unprofessional, and ethically, I can't even tell you how bad it is. And I can tell you this, I don't appreciate it, and I would like to see her resignation because she's not fit to hold that seat where she sits.
And we are, we are now done, Greg.
Okay, well, I'm good because, you know what?
Gave your input tonight.
I knew it was going to be this way anyway.
No, we certainly gave you.
You are the biggest help in the world. I appreciate you so much.
I'm supposed to be the clerk.
I'm just saying. I wish the rest of you could understand it.
Thanks for your input, Greg.
Yeah, you bet. My pleasure.
Okay. Next, are there any other members of the public wishing to address the council this evening? Second call for speakers.
Citizen rights, right?
Third call for speakers.
You guys are a joke.
The public comment is now closed.
Item number five is the consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered at this point on the agenda.
Would any counselor like anything removed from the consent agenda? Can I please have a motion to approve the consent agenda, including 6A through 6F?
More approval, Levy?
Nancy Forbeck, I still move.
I think it was moved by Counsel Levy, seconded by Counselor Forbeck. At this time, there is a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Are there any questions or discussion? I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Vice President Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Blakely.
Aye.
Counselor Forbeck.
Aye.
Counselor Keys.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Counselor Pruschel.
Aye.
President Duncan.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Set up the next item here. Item seven is licenses. Item 7A is consideration of Resolution 2020-116, approving a new Class B and Class B intoxicating liquor license for Dida's Inc., Doing Business, is Westside Pub and Grill, located at 1567 Madison Road. Mima Sarah Fadolowski, agent.
Okay.
Would you like me to proceed with my?
Can you go ahead and provide us with an overview?
So this location used to be operated as The Tavern, and The Tavern has since closed since COVID, and they chose not to reopen. And the owner, who is listed here as the agent, owns a restaurant on that property, would like to be able to expand the options that they have for serving patrons on that property, so they will be using that site to more use it for food, and they will have liquor as, you know, a menu option. But this is, they described at the ABLCC that their design for this business is more to complement the restaurant that is onsite. And of course, you know, they will have the events there or not, but they have an established business there on that site, and the ABLCC recommended unanimously approval of this license.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Pruschel. Is there a second?
Second by Blakely.
Second by Counselor Blakely. Is there any discussion? At this time, we'll go down and get comments and questions from counselors, beginning with Vice President Anderson. Vice President Anderson, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, none at this time.
Counselor Blakely, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, thank you.
Counselor Forbeck, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I do not.
Counselor Keys, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
I do not, thank you.
Counselor Levy, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I do not.
Counselor Pruschel, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I don't.
At this time, there's a motion and a second to approve the resolution. I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Vice President Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Blakely.
Aye.
Counselor Forbeck.
Aye.
Counselor Keys.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Counselor Pruschel.
Aye.
And President Duncan.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. 7B is consideration of Resolution 2020-117, approving a new Class B beer and Class B intoxicating liquor license for Five Bar LLC, Doing Business, is Five Bar, located at 530 East Grand Avenue, Levi J. Anderson, agent.
Clerk Treasuris Stotler, will you please provide us with an overview?
Sure. So many of you know this location at 530 East Grand, all the way back to when the owner, Birdie, known as Birdie, owned it. She still owns the building, and prior to Five Bar making application, it was Game Lounge for a year, and prior to that, it was Royalty. And so Levi is in the beverage service industry, and he has made application to make this a little bit of a social space, I guess he named it, with some specialty-type cocktails and a very, I think he had said it was going to be kind of a quieter vibe, if I think that was the word he used. So he has provided a business plan and a complete application, and the ABLCC recommendation for that license was also unanimous.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the resolution at this time?
I still move Nancy Forbeck.
Moved by Counselor Forbeck. Is there a second?
I'll second. Counselor Keys.
Second by Counselor Keys. Is there any discussion? We'll go down the roll with counselors. Vice President Anderson, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, none at this time.
Counselor Blakely, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, thank you.
Counselor Forbeck, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
Just that it makes me feel good that two businesses that have gone under are now being taken over, and I think that's a nice sign for Beloit. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Keys, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
I do not, thank you.
Counselor Levy, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No questions.
Counselor Pruschel, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I do not.
At this time, there's a motion and a second to approve the resolution. I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Vice President Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Blakely.
Aye.
Counselor Forbeck.
Aye.
Counselor Keys.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Counselor Pruschel.
Aye.
President Duncan.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. There are no ordinances this evening, but there are appointments. So the individuals about to be named have been nominated for a seat on the City Board Committee or Commission. Each nomination is subject to confirmation by the city council. Approval of appointment will be accomplished by one motion unless a council member requests to take up a nomination separately, in which event the nomination will be removed from the general order of business and considered at this point on the agenda. I will read the appointments and their terms. So to the Alcohol Beverage License Control Committee, Franchelle McLendon, to a term ending June 30, 2021. To the Appointment Review Committee, Dorothy Harrell, to a term ending December 31, 2021. To the Equal Opportunities Commission, Marquise Terrell, to a term ending June 30, 2023. To the Landmarks Commission, Avery McDaniel, to a term ending October 31, 2022. And to the Board of Review, Arsenia White, to a term ending December 31, 2024.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the appointments this evening?
I still move Counselor Blakely.
Moved by Counselor Blakely, and a second. Is there a second?
Vice President Anderson.
Nancy Forbeck.
It was seconded by Vice President Anderson. Is there any further discussion? What we'll do is go down by counselors, starting with Vice President Anderson. Do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
Just thank you to all the people that are wanting to contribute to the city of Beloit by putting their name out and trying to get on committees to help and for work city. So thank you to those that have applied recently, and we still have some openings. So if you haven't joined the party yet, there's still time.
Thank you. Counselor Blakely, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
Thanks to everybody who's taking the time and trouble to volunteer to help the city. Thanks to Mr. White for coming in for an interview earlier. Nice to have you all aboard.
Thank you. Counselor Forbeck, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, but I'm very pleased with the caliber of people that we are getting. I love this action that we're having in the last little time. Thank you.
Counselor Keys, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
Thank you to everyone who applied and are joining the committees. Definitely strong community assets and help us be stronger together moving forward and encouraging, as Vice President Anderson said, encouraging more people to pursue those vacancies. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Levy, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No.
Counselor Pruschel, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, just thanks to everybody. That's the way you get started, and it's a good learning experience. The more commissions you can be on, the, over time, the better you're going to understand how everything operates. And it's good to see that list that was once quite long three months ago getting much shorter. So it's good to see you making progress. Thank you, everybody.
At this time, there is a motion and a second to approve the appointments. I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Vice President Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Blakely.
Aye.
Counselor Forbeck.
Aye.
Counselor Keys.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Counselor Pruschel.
Aye.
President Duncan.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Item 7. Item 10 is Counselor Activities and Upcoming Events.
And I know at this time, we share the activities and upcoming events. But if councilors would also like to share information from their committees, that'll be fine. We'll begin with Vice President Anderson.
I'll try to make it short. Just wanted to remind everybody that for the farmer's market, you do need to have a mask now. I know that's the last week of the first week, but just going forward, just make sure you make note of that. And then lastly, we still have a few more committees. I know I mentioned it a little bit ago, but we still have a few more. This list is getting really small. We do have a spot for the ABLCC for a Tavern League rep. For Board of Appeals, we have one vacancy for resident, one for a first alternate, one for a second alternate. Board of Review, we still have a vacancy. And then Landmarks Commission, we still have a vacancy as well. You can go on the City of Beloit website and get all the information. Otherwise, you can get Pam Lathrop's number. I don't have it in front of me, but it's also on the City of Beloit website as well. Please get out there, get involved. And, you know, the more we can have people come in, the better. We can have a good conversation about what direction we take the city. So that's all for my comments tonight.
Thank you. Counselor Blakely.
I want to give a shout out to two city staff members who are excellent at providing information so that we can make informed decisions along the way. One of them is Hillary Rodman, who helps with the Landmarks Committee. She's in the Planning and Building Services Department. Great work, Hillary. We really appreciate you. I also want to thank Eric Miller, the Finance Director, who's always terrific at clarifying budgetary matters. Although the the heat has dropped down a bit, some people still suffer excessively from the heat. So if you know of someone or you have that kind of problem yourself, keep in mind that Beloit Public Library is a cooling zone all day and into the evening. And they are providing free masks for anyone who comes in the door. And I just want to say that this, in this unprecedented stressful time, remember to be kind and take good care of yourself and others. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Blakely. Counselor Forbeck.
I'm just very enthused about two young people who have just been named on the Equal Opportunities Commission. So I also sit on that commission. And I'm really looking forward to our next meeting, which is in August. Okay, so good work for these young people to be committing to time for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Keys.
Um, no, no committee commission updates.
Counselor Levy.
No comments.
Counselor Pruschel.
Um, as usual, we haven't had a meeting with the visible light yet, but the tourism industry is still struggling and it's going to continue to struggle for a while, it looks like. I'd also like to, I'm still volunteering to be a gatekeeper at the Beloit Farmer's Market on Saturdays. And this last Saturday was our first 100 mask requirements, facial covering requirements day. It was near 100% compliance. And there were some people with them that couldn't wear them and they were fined too. There are masks available for free if you need them. And it went very well despite the heat. It was it was the hottest Saturday yet. So that's all I have for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Pruschel. First, I want to share that if you are having symptoms or want information on where to be tested for coronavirus, please call the Beloit Health System Hotline. The number is 800-303-5770. If you should need help accessing food, paying utility bills, or finding other services and resources, please call 211. Next, I want to give a shout out to Public Safety of Wisconsin, Ed Jones, for organizing a community mask giveaway at Pigley Wiggly on July 16 from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. He distributed free KN95 masks and gave out 150 masks within the first hour. So heartfelt thanks to Ed for his commitment and generosity. The importance of everyone in our community having a mask to wear is critical in flattening the curve. Now for my counselor activities. I had the opportunity to go to our downtown farmer's market on Saturday and was happy to see staff, vendors, volunteers, and community members taking the mandatory safety precautions. Also, I attended the NAACP meeting on July 9 along with Counselor Keys and also Two Rock County Task Force meetings on July 9 and July 16 and the Appointment Review Committee meeting along with Vice President Anderson on July 13. I want to give a special thank you to the Appointment Review Committee members, Dan Gifford, Daniel Borowski, Paul Martin, Rebecca Wallandahl, Yusuf Adama, and Pam George for all their hard work in helping to ensure that the city committees are reflective of our Beloit community. So kudos to them. We still have a few vacancies for city committees, which are as follows. For the Alcohol Beverage License Control Committee, there is one vacancy for the Tavern League rep. The Board of Appeals, there is one vacancy for a resident, one vacancy for first alternate, and one vacancy for a second alternate. Then the Board of Review, there's two vacancies for alternates. And then the Landmarks Commission, there is one vacancy for a resident. If you're interested in volunteering and putting your skills to good use, please call the Executive Assistant Pam Lathrop at 608-364-6614. And for regular updates relative to the city of Beloit, please see our city website or Facebook page. If you should need access to a computer, please go to the Beloit Public Library. That said, I want to close by thanking City Manager Luther and our city staff for prioritizing their efforts to deal with the pandemic crisis along with the daily operations of the city. Please know that we truly appreciate all that each of you are doing from day to day. Additionally, we have lots of projects happening around town, including the I-3990 expansion project. So I encourage residents to please be patient and drive carefully. I also strongly urge everyone to please wear a face mask. When you are in a public place, social distance, cover your cough or sneeze, avoid touching your face, and wash frequently touched surfaces and your hands. Together, we can and will stop the spread of COVID-19, but we must take this seriously. Next, we'll go to item 11. Thank you.
There is no city manager. There is no city manager presentation, nor are there reports from boards and city officers. Before we adjourn.
And I just had something add.
Go ahead, Madam President.
And and I know we're going to adjourn, but I just wanted to say this. We had a speaker tonight that was allowed to give his input. And I usually don't come off just off the script, but right now I am. And I just want to say that we want to make sure that everyone has the right to to say how they feel. But we also want to be respectful to everyone. And I just want to mention on Counselor Blakely's behalf, that she works really hard. And it's easy for people to say that we're just sitting here, but we're not just sitting here taking up seats. We we honestly, truly care about this community. So I just want to put that out and just want to apologize to Counselor Blakely. And before, in adding to that, I just want to end our meeting with a quote from Congressman John Lewis. And this, I think, is such a great time to say this. "We are one people with one family. We all live in the same house. And through books, through information, we must find a way to say to people that we must lay down the burden of hate, for hate is too heavy a burden to bear." So with that said, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Regina. Nancy Forbeck, I move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Counselor Keys, second.
Counselor Keys, the motion was made by Forbeck, the second was Counselor Keys. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are now adjourned. This concludes tonight's council meeting. However, we are going to begin a workshop.
Can I just get my phone first? I was very patient out here. I didn't want to interrupt.
Yes.
I'm so glad I stuck around here. That was beautiful.
Thank you. Now let's begin the workshop. Thank you, Mr. Hadley.
Pleasure.
Um, councilors, if you could please hold your questions until the end, that'd be great. So we'll begin with Terry Downing. Now Terry is our Deputy Community Development Director. And then we also have James Thompson, who'll be joining in at some point. I'm sure he's the Director of Transit. And so if we could have them to present. And then any questions, councilors, we'll take that at the end, okay? All right. Go ahead, Terry.
Hi, everyone. I I can't see everyone, so hopefully you can see me and then you'll be able to see the presentation. Yes, everybody's still there? It's weird not having an interactive.
Are we?
Okay. Okay, so the SLATS Transit Plan is a plan. The transit agencies have to do a study every five years to of their routes to identify needs and gaps in service and then make adjustments if and where necessary. And this year, we worked with SLATS, which is the State Line Area Transportation Study, which is a, the TJ Nie, who is the MPO, is the staff liaison to that. And this year, we worked with SLATS to understand the regional needs of the community, specifically focusing on how we can connect our neighboring communities since we are connected really to South Beloit and Rockford and Janesville and making sure that our public transportation can get people where they need to go throughout the state line area. So this PowerPoint will go through, I'll introduce people in a second. And then we'll review the the activities of the project, of the plan. We'll talk about the needs and the gaps and the outreach that we did. Then we'll go over the proposed routes that we came up with, and then there'll be opportunity for discussion. So this PowerPoint isn't the full plan. The full plan will be released for public consumption pretty soon. And and then there'll be a public comment period. So before I get started, I know that I was already introduced. My name's Terry Downing. I'm the Deputy Community Development Director. We have the Director of Transit, James Thompson, is here. And we also have TJ Nie on the line. Are you there, TJ?
I am. I'm at home.
Okay. So TJ is the MPO. TJ, will you tell people what MPO means?
Uh, we're the Metropolitan Planning Organization for the Beloit Urbanized Area. And so when the census defined our collective urbanized area as 50,000 people or more, they created a metropolitan planning organization. And we're responsible for multimodal transportation planning. And we serve not only the city of Beloit, but also the Town of Beloit and the Town of Turtle and City of South Beloit, Village of Rockton, and parts of the Village of Rosco. And then the surrounding townships on the Illinois side as well.
Thank you, TJ. So we can go to the next slide. So first, we'll go over the review of the project activities. Go to the next slide. Uh, so the existing transit needs and gaps were identified. There are three focus areas. Geographical gaps, which is the lack of availability of service in important markets or a lack of access to major destinations. These are the needs that were identified. And the gaps of service from the existing routes that we have now. There were also temporal gaps, so lack of availability of service during specific hours when customers need to travel. And then a lack of frequency, quality of service gaps, which are lack of frequency, long and inefficient travel times, and other characteristics that make the service less useful for customers. I do want to point out that the way we got this information was through surveys. And we're going to talk about that later in the presentation too. But just to frame what you're going to see moving forward, we did, we hired SRF consultants, who also put this PowerPoint together. And they did surveys, they interviewed passengers, they interviewed drivers, they interviewed management. We also had, through community development, a consolidated plan that we did, which is a five-year plan on community development needs. And in that plan, we had some steering committee meetings and some neighborhood meetings, some neighborhood listening sessions related to the NARSA. And the NARSA is a Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy Area Plan. And and then we also looked at ridership data. So with all of those public input pieces, that's how we identified the needs and the gaps in service. The next slide, please. So the existing quality of service gaps, all routes except for the BJE. The BJE is the Beloit Janesville Express. That is a route that we've had for approximately 30 years. That was not included in this study. And that's because that that route is funded through a consortium of members and they pay for that route. And it's not part of our regular route system that's paid for through the federal funds. It is, but it isn't. So anyway, the BJE is remaining the same and it's not part of this study. So right now, we have the yellow route, which is an 80-minute cycle. It's long, slow, and includes multiple layovers at the Library, Eclipse Center, and at the Beloit Clinic. So right now, we have two buses on that route. We also have the red route, which is an 80-minute cycle as well. It's also slow and includes multiple layovers at the Library, Eclipse Center, and Walmart. There are two buses on that route. And then we have the blue route, which is a one-way loop that's 40 minutes. And it's very circuitous and offers customer service in only one direction and misses major destinations in transit supportive areas in the heart of the West Side. There's only one bus on that route. We also have three buses that operate on Saturdays. And that makes for some extremely long travel times. There's a general lack of service frequency and slow cross-trip trips. We heard that a lot. I don't know if any of the, I know some of the councilors attended the steering committee meetings and the neighborhood listening sessions. It was more in the steering committee meetings that we heard that the current public transportation system that we have here in Beloit is just not meeting the needs of everyone, especially the low to moderate income population, the disabled population, and our seniors in the community. Next slide, please. So transit supportive areas, you'll see a map on this screen. This is the, these are the current routes that we have. You'll see the red, the blue, and the yellow. It looked like green on my thing. And then you'll see the BJE, the Beloit Janesville Express, is the brown route that goes up and down. And just as a reminder, that was not included in this study. So our current routes, the transit supportive areas are places with at least four people or four jobs per acre. So the consultants looked at how close are our routes to getting people to those or where people can catch a bus in order to get to those. 70% of the TSA is located in the SLATS planning area are within a quarter mile of existing bus routes. Other transit supportive areas include the Gateway Business Park, as well as portions of Rockton and South Beloit. We are not serving the Gateway Business Park at this time with our current system. And there's some connectivity to South Beloit and Rockton, but not as much as we would like to see. Next slide. Major employers, that's what this map is on the screen. I would like to point out that in the gateway, the businesses such as Amazon and some of the other ones aren't on this map. So just, I just wanted to point that out. You'll see that the Staples Fulfillment Center is on there, and that's in the Gateway Business area. So you'll see that there's no service out there. And Amazon with its huge business is going to have lots and lots of employers or employees. So the the map shows employers with at least 200 employees. Most of these are located near existing transit routes. But some, particularly in the I-39 I-90 corridor, are not, which is the, you know, Gateway Business area. In total, 53% of all jobs within the SLATS Metropolitan Planning Area are located within a quarter mile of an existing bus route. So the outreach, as I mentioned already, the engagement activities were the community survey. These were done online. There were paper copies that were distributed to area, distributed in the area and at other locations. There was an onboard survey, which was also online. Surveys were completed in person and paper copies were available. The consultants rode the buses and talked with passengers, and they also were at the transfer center. Center. Uh, there was an employer outreach engagement, so the consultants did meet with the bus drivers. They met with management a couple times. Uh, there were interviews and small group discuss- discussion. And then there, there will be a final public outreach once council has seen the routes. Uh, and then we will be going through a public, uh, comment period, and, um, so the public can obviously talk about the routes. What's not on this slide is what we did in the community development side with the steering committees and the neighborhood listening sessions. So now we'll go into the proposed service recommendations. Um, the objectives that we were trying to reach while doing these was to coordinate service to Beloit's neighboring communities, like I mentioned earlier, to provide better access to employment centers, since there were no, uh, buses that were going out to some of our major employers. Uh, we wanted to address flaws of the current system to ensure buses run at a maximum frequency of 30 minutes, uh, better connections to low to moderate income areas. Uh, previously, there were some pretty major, pretty big gaps in both the Merrill and the Hackett neighborhoods. Uh, and then, uh, improve the system legibility, and that just means that we want people to be able to understand the routes and do the timing points, uh, pretty quickly. Make it easy for people. With the 80-minute and 40-minute headways, that was difficult for people to, um, uh, kind of get a hold of. It was really hard for people to understand, um, and people would get mixed up, and that's a problem. Uh, we also wanted to pr- provide a cost-neutral service option, obviously. So within, uh, we wanted to maintain, stay within our current budget, but I, um, going to preface this by saying that means that we can't have it all. So everything that we want to do within the current budget, um, atmosphere, we won't be able to do everything. So the proposed routes, um, uh, before I go into the proposed routes, I'm going to point you to the direction of the two asterisks at the bottom. So right now, we have red, blue, and yellow routes. So although this says we're going to have red route, green route, and blue route, we are going to change the names so it's not confusing to people once we change the routes. So we'll, it'll be either like Route 1, Route 2, or we're, uh, we were thinking of calling at the west side inner loop, the east side inner loop, and then an outer loop. Uh, but that we will finalize, obviously, before it goes out to, for public consumption. So the red route, which is essentially the west side inner loop, um, I should say that the, what we developed was two small inner loops and then one large outer loop. Um, so the red route is the west side inner loop. There'll be one bus on that. Uh, the green route is the east side inner loop, which will put one bus on that. And then the blue route is a large, um, outer loop route, um, which three buses will be on, so they can be, they can catch a bus every half an hour. That's an hour and a half loop. So with three buses on there, people can catch that within a half an hour. Um, and then, uh, Beloit-Janesville Express, which is unchanged, as I mentioned before. And then the Gateway Extra. Now that is a limited service route that we're proposing at this time. So I'll go through each route one by one, and at the end, you'll see a map with all of them together, so you can see how, uh, much the, uh, city is covered. So the red route, which I'm calling the west side inner loop, is the west side, uh, neighborhood circular. So it'll start at the Transfer Center downtown. It'll follow the arrows, go all the way through. There, there's a transfer point at Woodman's. You'll see how the blue route connects to that. Um, so that's up on the upper left side of the map, is where there'll be a transfer point at Woodman's, and, um, and then it'll head back downtown. It connects the transfer, oh, I already said that. Uh, overall cycle is 30 minutes, and there'll be one bus on there, and it'll, the frequency is 30 minutes as well. The green ri- route is the S side, is the east side inner loop. Um, and it's also a circular route, so it starts at the Transfer Center and goes through, um, Census Tract, uh, 16 and, no, Census Tract 18. Uh, uh, all the way up to the Eclipse Center and Piggly Wiggly, and then comes back down to the Transfer Center. There's a small deviation for school start and stop times, and that's just to avoid delays. So we'll jog over one block just to make sure that we're not, um, going through Merrill, by Merrill, um, grade school. So that is also 30 minutes. Uh, we'll put one bus on that, and it'll be a 30-minute frequency. The blue route, which looks super complicated, but, um, it's really not that complicated. Uh, this connects major destinations, including downtown Beloit, the Gateway area, Beloit Memorial Hospital, the clinic, the Eclipse Center, which will be a transfer point, uh, the Town of Beloit Business Park, and Beloit's west side neighborhoods. The Town of Beloit Business Park is one thing that came up when we were talking to the community that they wanted to see connect- connectivity to, because our residents work in that area. Uh, the blue route links to regional destinations, and inner loops connect to local community-based destinations. So, um, it also includes, uh, coverage of large grocery stores in Beloit, including Woodman's, Piggly Wiggly, and Walmart, which are all transfer points, and then Aldi's, which is not a transfer point. The overall travel time is 90 minutes or a, an hour and a half. We'll have three buses on that route, so the frequency is 30 minutes. The Gateway Service, which is, will be new for us, um, uh, the cycle time is 30 minutes. Uh, I'm not sure what they mean by limited stop, um, but the, there'll be one bus on this, and what we're planning to do is four trips per day. So two trips in the AM and two trips in the PM. And that goes straight from the Transfer Center. Uh, it does travel through South Beloit and connects to the Van Gelder Bus. So if people coming up from Rockford, um, could actually catch this and go to work in Beloit, it'll come up and go to, um, Amazon and the rest of the Gateway, go to Cary, circle back, and then follow the same path back to the Transfer Center. We'll do two trips in the AM, two trips in the PM. We have been working with Amazon on their start and end times to make sure that this bus makes sense to get people to work. Now, this is the map that has all of the routes together. So you can see how, um, everything connects. Uh, the red route, which is the west side inner loop, the green route, which is the east side inner loop, and then the blue route, which is the outer loop. Uh, they all connect to, and then the Gateway Route. They all connect to that blue route, uh, where we can transfer at various areas. And has more coverage than what we have now. So the improvements that we're seeing with these new routes is better coverage of transit supportive areas with, uh, areas with population and employment densities that can support basic levels of fixed route service. We're going from 70% to 86%. Improved job access is from 73% to 66%. I do feel like the consultants, uh, I feel like there's more improved job access with the Gateway Route than what is listed here, but, um, parts of the Beloit's north side along Show Pier and Murphy Woods Road, north of Cranston Road. This was also specifically requested during the interviews and surveys of our residents. They said there, the current route system didn't have connectivity there, so we made sure that, uh, we wanted to make sure that buses went down in that area. The Town of Beloit Business Park along Hubie Park Parkway, west of Prairie Avenue, which I explained before, some of our residents work over there, and they would like to see service over there. The Gateway Area and emerging employment and residential areas east of I-39 and I-90. So we not only have a number of businesses, entry-level employment opportunities in the Gateway Area, but we also have a number of apartment complexes and apartment buildings that, uh, their potential riders may need to take the bus. Beloit's southeast side, along the Broad Street Corridor and State Line Road, and the Gardner Street Corridor in South Beloit. So again, we have a lot of people who, we have people who live in South Beloit who, who actually work in Beloit. So trying to connect the communities and connect the people to the job access is, um, important. Beloit's, I'm sorry, increased frequency has a positive impact on ridership, so we're going from 40 and 80-minute headways down to 30-minute headways, which is, uh, which is really, um, a huge improvement. It also will help people figure out timing points better, because they know if a bus is coming every half an hour, they know, if it's 12 minutes past the hour, they know it's 12, on the 12 and on the 42, um, if it's coming every half an hour. Where when you have 40-minute and 80-minute headways, it's really hard for people to do that math in their head. If I, it's a 40-minute headway, you know, trying to figure out when they can catch their next bus can be really confusing. And then the fin- uh, the next one, the financial a- um, analysis. Uh, so the existing service, um, you'll see in the table, uh, the cost of the existing service, uh, the cost of the proposed routes, and you'll see that there is a change net cost. Now, um, in the small print there, you'll see that most of the cost changes because of a recommendation to extend weekday hours from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM. So in this study, you'll see that there is a recommendation, because the community does need public transportation for that second shift, uh, population. Um, now, uh, we know that that's not in the budget at this time, so that we're not going to propose that at this time. So, uh, but it is something that we believe is important, so hopefully we can work towards that as a goal. Uh, there's also, um, the Gateway Extra is an estimated cost of $102,000. So that is an extra bus. So if we do two inner loops and an outer loop, that's our five buses. That's what we're running now. If we want that Gateway Extra, the, even running the four trips, uh, that is one extra bus. So in order to accommodate that, we may need to scale back Saturday service or eliminate it completely. So, um, that'll be something that we'll have to discuss, and slide. We can't have both Saturday service and the Gateway Route with the current budget that we have. So future considerations are a regional integration of services with SMTD. That's, uh, TJ, you have to help me out here. State Line Mass Transit District? Okay. State Line.
Right, that's it.
Go ahead. TJ, go ahead.
Oh, you had it. The State Line Mass Transit District, which operates the Demand/Response Service in South Beloit, Rockton, Rockton Township, Roscoe and Roscoe Township.
Okay. And then, uh, da- Demand/Response Services, so we can reach some of the outer or less populated areas or some of the employment centers. We may be able to do some Demand/Response Services. We have experience in that now, uh, since COVID. We did Demand/Response. But we also have, um, Rock County has a Demand/Response System already, and so does SMTD. So there's some opportunities for partnerships there. School Tripper Service, which, uh, uh, at Beloit Transit, we believe there needs to be a School Tripper Service. Uh, I know that the school district, um, at one point was looking again at Tripper Service. They did eliminate Tripper Service a couple year, a few years ago, and replaced it with the Yellow Bus Service. Um, however, uh, right before Dr. Monroe left, they were exploring, uh, having School Tripper Service again. Uh, we need workforce transportation, probably more than what we can offer in this proposal for the Gateway, uh, Route. And then marketing, uh, partnerships. And, uh, I wish I had more of an explanation for that, but I don't at this time. So if, if counselor, if President Duncan would like to entertain questions, we can.
Okay. Now, can you hear me? Thank you, Terry, for that wonderful presentation. What we'll do is we'll go down with councilors, um, and we'll begin with Vice President Anderson. If you could, if you have a question or a comment, go ahead.
Yeah, I've got a few. First off, Terry, uh, great job with this, great presentation. Glad you're with us. Uh, first off, uh, I definitely liked the idea of calling it east side, west side, and outer loop. That's my personal opinion. I think that makes, makes a lot of sense. Uh, I just had a couple things. One, uh, for some of the council members that don't know, I know you and I have talked about it, but could you explain what a Tripper Route is? Uh, for schools? Uh, 'cause I know that's, you know, it's an interesting thing, and I think it's important. So could you explain that to the rest of the council?
Sure. What a Tripper Route is, is it's not part of our regular fixed route system that runs all day long. So a Tripper Route aligns with school start and stop times, and it's specific, uh, routing that goes through, meanders through the neighborhoods, um, that specifically picks up, uh, school kids. Now, there are rules that we have to still have that open to the public, otherwise it's called a charter, and we're not allowed to do that, um, as a public transportation system. So, but we can create a route that goes through, uh, the neighborhoods and just picks up the school kids and then drops them off at specific schools. Um, it, it's outside of the regular route system.
Okay, and just, just one more question or comment, maybe, is, uh, well, I got two of them, actually. One is, how, for the Gateway, uh, Route, you know, I, I think that's really beneficial for businesses. Have we talked to businesses about maybe, uh, like buying in or helping us subsidize that in any way? Because this, this seems like a win for them.
Um, we haven't talked to the businesses yet, but I have talked to, uh, the Economic Development Director, and we are, uh, planning to approach the businesses to see if they would participate in some kind of partnership, maybe similar to what we're doing with the BJE Consortium, um, which has, uh, eight or nine members, um, that pay into a system so they can have that, uh, between Beloit and Janesville. So that's the model that we're, um, hoping that we can get businesses to look at.
Thanks. And just the last thing is, have you heard anything from the school district about maybe collaborating with them a little more on transit?
I have not. Have you, James? Not at this time.
Okay, that, that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Anderson. Counselor Blakely. Counselor Blakely.
I'm here. I've become a B instead of an SB. I had to double-check myself. What an amazing amount of work. Thank you for an extremely thorough presentation and all the work that you all have gone into to bring this together. Um, I have a basic question. I realize there's much more work to be done, um, as, as far as budgeting and working things out, back and forth and back and forth. Is there any rough idea at this time, Terry, about a timetable for implementation?
Yes. The implementation is currently scheduled for October 15th. Um, before that point, we have to have some, uh, public comment periods and, uh, opportunities for the public to come and see the routes. Uh, with the COVID restrictions, we're kind of looking at what that's going to look like. Under normal circumstances, we would have tripods with the maps out at the Transfer Center, uh, for riders to come and look at it, and we would encourage people to come and ride the buses. Um, maybe we could still do that with, uh, masks and social distancing, I'm hoping. Um, but that, uh, public comment period, I believe that comment pop, comment, public comment period is 30 days. Um, I, I'm not as fluent in the transit stuff as I am the CDBG stuff, so, um, I'm, I'm nervous I might be wrong. But there is a public comment, you know, input period. And then TJ, is there an approval that needs to happen through SLAT's?
No, we don't have any technical approval. There'll be a public hearing at a council meeting, um, in, when did you say, October? And so the public will have an.
Everything just shut off.
We're having a little technical difficulty. Just bear with us, please.
Okay, we've lost all power. One second.
Did we lose power?
No, we're gonna, we'll be just fine in one second. Okay. Just bear with us. Lost connection here and some power, so. Um, can, let me.
Are we still televised right now?
Um, we are, so one second.
Just want to let people know that we are just experiencing some technical difficulty and we should be getting started shortly here.
Okay, um, Kevin, can you hear me? Okay, we've, uh, lost power to the laptop, I've got you on speakerphone. We're gonna have, uh, Terry, just, I'm gonna move it near where the laptop is and we'll finish the rest of the workshop here.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, and I believe we stopped at Counselor Blakely.
And I, I don't know if I finished answering her question, I can't remember what the question was.
I was asking you about the timetable and so on.
The timetable, that's right.
Okay, thank you. She said that I answered her question.
Okay, you answered the question, thank you Counselor Blakely. Next, Counselor Forbeck.
Yes, um, thanks, this looks really good Terry, I know how this is difficult. Um, I'm just wondering, does it make sense to be taking a look at this big change? And I'm assuming if we can, we're going to be paying more for better, better service if we can. But during this COVID time, I mean, can people really even be on the, the buses? I, I'm sorry, I don't know.
Uh, yes, the, uh, people are being allowed on the buses, we're operating our regular route system right now. We are, um, practicing social distancing, so there are seats that are blocked off. And we're rotating the buses out and sanitizing them, um, on a regular basis. Uh, I'm looking at James because he obviously knows a lot more about this than I do, but, uh, and, uh, we have some things on the bus to protect the drivers. Uh, and then we also offer free masks. It's not mandatory right now for passengers to wear masks, but it's encouraged. And then we have masks that we can give passengers if they, uh, want them, if they want to use them. Did I miss anything James? Okay, he says I didn't miss anything, I think he's just overly nice.
All right. All right, thanks Terry.
You're welcome.
Any other questions Counselor Forbeck? Thank you, Counselor Keys.
Thank you.
Counselor Keys?
Yes, um, so thank you for the very informative, um, presentation. I, I do have several questions, um, and I'm gonna start pretty basic, being newer. Um, I am just curious, will this impact the cost or of, um, rides or bus passes? And could you speak to what the current rate is now?
Sure, uh, the current rate is a dollar fifty.
Dollar fifty.
Uh, for a regular, I'm gonna have James come up and talk, talk about the rates. But before he goes into that, it will not affect the rates, the rates will stay the same, um, and then I'll have James explain what the rates are now.
Uh, currently the, uh, regular fare for an individual to ride the bus is a dollar fifty. Uh, we do offer a reduced rate for seniors of seventy-five cents. Um, we have ten-ride passes, for ten rides it'd be twelve dollars. Um, senior passes are six dollars for a ten-ride pass. Uh, for a trip to go to Janesville from Beloit would be three dollars and fifty cents. Uh, we do offer a ten-ride pass there for thirty dollars for ten rides. So there's a little bit of a savings if you do buy the ten-ride passes. So that's our favors.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then, is there a prediction as far as, you mentioned that the, the actual geographic coverage, I think this is what it was referring to. It went from seventy percent to eighty-six percent or, um, or the neighborhoods. Does, do you have a prediction of how that may, um, impact ridership and like metrics of what ridership was now? And then how, if, if this was implemented, so we can compare the success or, um, after?
So we don't have a prediction of how, um, it will affect ridership. Uh, the current system that we have, we do know that when they, we went from the old route system, which had more coverage and, uh, better frequency. So they were, they went from half-hour, hour routes down to these forty, eighty-minute routes, that we saw ridership drop almost in half. So, uh, we are hoping that, especially with the better connectivity to, I should mention, they all go by the schools also, which the current route system doesn't. The new route system goes by all the schools and then it goes out to the Gateway, so we're hoping to see some ridership increases. But there's really no way to know. The good news is we have, um, new fare boxes. We have brand-new fare boxes that give us a lot better data than the old fare boxes that we had, uh, they were thirty years old, we just replaced them about six months ago. Um, so we're able to pull data and we'll be able to have some really good numbers to compare, and I'm looking forward to that.
That's great to, to know and appreciate that they go, the routes go by schools, especially if there's, um, partnership with the district for Tripper Routes. So, do we currently have a, a youth rate? And/or if we partnered with the school, would there be, um, a financial partnership to help us with that? And would we have to add additional bus? Uh, do we have the buses? Sorry, that's like a three-tiered question.
So, uh, so we are hoping to talk to the school district and we are hoping to talk about, uh, assisting with the, with financing, uh, any trippers that we might have. Um, when we began talks, uh, before Dr. Monroe left, they were, we were talking about, um, some financial, you know, p- partnerships. And then the last part of your question, I forgot now.
Um, so then would that cover the, the, the student rate then, ideally? Or do we have a discounted student rate? Or is the, or only discounted senior rate?
We don't have a discounted senior rate. Oh, student rate, I'm sorry.
Okay.
We, we do offer a, a student pass, uh, they get a sticker on their ID card. For a semester is seventy-five dollars for a semester for a student. That, that's half the year for seventy-five dollars, they can ride every day that the school is in session.
Okay.
I shouldn't.
Thank you, um.
Never mind.
Go ahead.
That's okay.
And do you have some more questions Counselor Keys?
Um, I guess I do, I did want to echo the question from Counselor, um, Anderson, uh, about the partnership with the industries. And then ask, um, just inquire if there would be any potential for, um, but I really think that the, the commute, the Gateway Extra would be terrific. And is, was beneficial, um, to the other communities as well. Have we reached out to, say like South Beloit or other communities on helping us fund this extra one? Because it sounds like we can't continue to serve our community on Saturdays while adding this, so looking to see, um, have we reached out to South Beloit or other communities?
Uh, TJ, are you able to help with that question?
Um, we have, we have not, um, we, we, we've included, um, the town of Beloit Administrator, Jean Wright, in our sort of steering committee. Um, and he had expressed interest in serving, uh, parts of the town of Beloit, and which is one, and, which is one of the reasons we're showing it going up into the Town of Beloit Business Park. And also there was some interest, um, from the Turner School District. And so there may be opportunities, I don't know that we've had those conversations yet about cost sharing. But, um, there, there certainly would be opportunities, I think, to do so.
Great, um, I really feel that the, the collaborations would be terrific because, um, these, these additions look great, thank you, no more questions.
Thank you Counselor Keys, Counselor Levy.
Just a, just a couple of questions. Uh, when we, when we talk about student discounts, does that also apply to Blackhawk Tech students?
Nothing in specific to our Blackhawk Tech, uh. We do offer a pass if they're going from, or discount, if they're going from Beloit to Blackhawk Tech. Uh, that is a reduced rate from going all the way to Janesville. Uh, re- the rate for going from Beloit to Janesville is three fifty. However, if they only go to Blackhawk Tech, it's only two dollars and twenty-five cents fare. So there's a little bit of, uh, cost decrease if they're only going to Blackhawk Tech.
Okay, okay, and then, uh, the other piece, I think I asked this every time we talk about this, are we missing, um, anything with Beloit College? As we continue to build the city up, and I know we have bus, bus routes that go around or near the college. But I know that they sometimes have transportation where they use vans or something. But I'm just thinking, on a Saturday or a Sunday, um, is there a way that we can get something with those college students? To get them to ride the buses more, um, offer something, uh, maybe within their tuition package. Uh, I just know, uh, a couple of colleges, my daughter, when she went to one, that was included kind of in her tuition. She can ride the city bus for free, but it was covered some kind of way. So I didn't know we, um, missing something with the Beloit College. Uh, but I do like the new plan, my biggest concern now, uh, Terry, is getting the word out. I mean, uh, August fifteenth is really right around the corner, uh, so getting the word out and letting people know.
October.
October, right, October fifteenth. It's still, yeah, yeah, still kind of right, right around the corner, but when you look up, already in August. Um, so, so just getting the word out with the new routes, people understanding them, and, um, I, I'm encouraged and I like it, especially going up to the Gateway. You know, that's something we've been, I've been talking about for years, so I'm really happy about that. But I just want to make sure that when October fifteenth arrives, everybody, the public is fully aware of what's gonna be going on, and then we can just hit the ground running.
So, uh, to, uh, to address the Beloit College question, um, the routes that we have now don't really serve the college. Uh, the new green inner loop will get closer to the college. I feel like, uh, right now, we don't really have an argument to present to the college, cause we're not serving them very well, so. Uh, but with the new routes, if we can show that there's some benefit to the college students, maybe we could get them on board to, um, and we could work with them on some incentive packages maybe. The second piece, uh, with getting the word out, we'll work closely with Sarah Millard to, uh, make sure that we'll get the word out. Our riders in particular, we will be down at the transfer center, so the current riders that we have, we'll make sure that they all are aware and we'll work with them and make sure that, um, you know, they, they know. And then they'll be, we, we did budget some extra funds to, uh, for marketing and for, in the twenty-twenty budget. And for, you know, outreach and things like that, to make sure that the public is aware. We have social media now, so hopefully we can get the word out that way too, um, where we didn't have.
Right, and just say, just to kind of follow up, have we ever done a survey at the Beloit College, uh, with the students to see if they would need bus service there? And then my last question to kind of piggyback on that is, yeah, I think the advertising is gonna be very important, because if we start school, um, and let's say our students do go back. They're gonna be riding the old routes for one month, and then all of a sudden we change the next month, and that could throw a hiccup if they're not informed about it as well. I mean, uh, I hope you understand that question, that we're starting, if we start school in September, we change in October, they're gonna have to do some kind of creative changing too.
Yes, we, we understand that, we, that was a concern of ours as well, it was just how the timing ended up working out. Um, there was a huge delay with the COVID, you know, when COVID hit, so it really, um, delayed our timeline as well, it delayed it by about three months. And, uh, our other option is to wait until like the, a break in the semester, but, uh, but then we won't be able to serve Amazon. Um, and that was, uh, a big priority, is to make sure that we could also serve Amazon. The other, yeah, that's a good point Julie, the other reason is we'd like to make the switch when it's still warm out, so that way if anybody gets, um, lost or misses a bus because they're not familiar, we don't want them stuck in the cold.
No, I understand, I'm good, I'm good.
Thank you, and then I just had a, a couple myself, uh, Terry, just wondering, and just to go back, I know in the beginning, I think, uh, Counselor Forbeck too had also mentioned this with the COVID. You know, we saw the financial a- analysis tonight, but I'm sure it's probably unprecedented, because it's, we've never had this COVID pandemic like we have now. And so I'm, you showed us the financial a- analysis, but I'm sure that that perhaps may change. I'm thinking with, and you don't have to go into detail tonight, just something I think to keep an eye on. And then, just to follow up too, with the continuing of services, and I'm sure this is probably is gonna be the same with those people who are physically challenged, that their needs will be met, they'll still be able to catch the bus. Those things won't change, we'll still have things in place for those, for, uh, those individuals. Also, um, the partnership, as we talked about the different partnerships tonight, I hope we are also going to include the businesses, because we are going in that business district. I think to tap into all those resources. And then, uh, one of the important pieces, I think that Kevin, uh, mentioned, was that, um, we need to be sure to market the changes so that we can enhance our ridership. And so I think that would certainly complement what we're doing. So, go ahead Terry.
I don't know if, uh, Counselor Prushel was able to make comment.
Did Counselor Pr- Counselor Prushel? Oh, I apologize, I'm sorry, I just skipped right over you, so let's, let, I'm, I'm gonna just back up and go back to you, okay? Counselor Prushel.
Oh, okay.
I apologize.
Questions? Um, I understand how hard it is to come up with a map that makes sense and get everything spaced out right and cover all the stops you want to make. That's a daunting task, and I watched him do it with pen and paper and pencil and paper on drafting boards back in the seventies, so I know how hard it is. It's gotta be easier now, but still hard. Um.
Still hard.
I still notice, that, I still notice that we have an area to the east of Prairie Avenue, White Avenue, in the area of the Colac Center. Uh, east side of Beloit, east side, that's not, uh, very well-served. And I'm kind of confused about the big gap above Bay, above, uh, Henry Avenue. I understand that's Town of Beloit, uh, mostly, mostly, not all. But, uh, you know, and I'm just looking at that, and then, I also notice, at the red route, and I like that west-side loop, east-side loop, that's good, that's good names, simple, everybody can understand it. Uh, one is much larger than the other, but there's running with one bus at thirty minutes. So I was a little confused by that too. Uh, I know sometimes they don't run as you plan, you know, you think you can do a half-hour loop and you find out later that it's forty-five minutes or something, and something comes up, you know? The practicality of it. So, is there still time in this process to make adjustments, to maybe fill in some of these missing, uh, areas? To adjust things sideways enough to do that kind of thing?
So that's what the public comment period is for, is for suggestions, so we can, we can consider those things and see if we can serve areas that people may, um, feel aren't, are underserved. Uh, I can tell you that the area that you're talking about near the Colac Center, um, there are a couple of issues there. The buses to turn in those, on those streets back there.
Yeah.
Um, there's not enough room, um, for those radiuses, especially back by the Colac Center, especially with the parking on both sides. Um, the other issue is White Avenue, uh, trying to get out on White Avenue with a bus, um, would cause major, major delays. Um, and it's not, um, and even going down White Avenue, we actually purposely avoided White Avenue because of the delays that it would cause. The Bayless area, or above the Bayless area, um, uh, we just didn't go in there because.
Bayless, Cranston Park, yeah.
Yeah, uh, Cranston.
Bayless, Cranston Park, yeah, that whole area.
Yeah, um, and that is because it's in the town. Um, so, uh, we, I mean, if we had an unlimited budget, we would add another bus, uh, to serve the town as well. Um, but I don't know if our taxpayers would like that, so, um.
Yeah. Yeah.
But, uh, so that's why we're not in that area, is because it is in the town. Um, I do, I do want to say that we are looking at the BJE route, which isn't part of this, uh, plan. Outside of the plan, we're looking at the BJE route to see if we can modify the southern end of that to maybe serve some of the areas on the way back in, rather than coming straight down Riverside. We're still in the process of working on.
Cock over.
We're still in the process of working on timing points. So we're not sure. We may have some wiggle room, we may not. But we are in talks with Janesville and the county, um, when they open up their big center at Seventeen, Seventeen Center Avenue, um, of maybe modifying that route. And maybe we can serve some of these other communities if it's just a, or another, uh, serve some of these neighborhoods if it's just a straight shot, straight down to either Eclipse or, um, we're hoping to stop it at Eclipse, but that's for another council meeting. And, um, so yes.
Well, I was just surprised that, on your, on your map here, Terry, where Summit Avenue is written, I'm surprised there's not a little further east move of the route to cover closer to that area. But maybe it's not necessary. I just, it's, it's just, you look at the west side, it's so.
Yeah.
Nice.
Well.
You know, you got straight, and then it's all tight on the east side.
If you, I don't know if it's easy to see on the map here, but that green route, the, um, the east side hair loop goes up to Pickly Wiggly over there.
I see that.
So that way, there's a transfer point there if people need to get, catch the blue route or, or get off of the blue route to catch the green route. Um, so it does go a little bit further.
I was thinking the wrong. Yeah. I was just wondering why it just didn't, I know, why it just didn't, somewhere in Prairie there, Copeland or somewhere, just, I don't know. It seems to me like it could have been a little more spread out. I don't know. It's just an idea. I don't know. I see the problem you got dealing with White Avenue. I like the fact that this is revenue neutral, mostly revenue neutral, so. And that brings me to my next question.
Go ahead, Counselor Prushel.
Okay. Uh, I know you talked about the hours and how that impacts the cost of operations, having those extended hours. And I'm gonna get back up to that on my screen here, where it talked about the hours. Uh, where was that? What page was that? Um. There, um. Where'd the hours of operation go? I can't find, what page is that on?
Sorry.
There it is.
Yeah. Page twenty, the financial anal, uh, analysis page. And it's at the bottom in the narrative.
Okay, there, at the bottom of it, in the paragraph, okay. Um, yeah, so I mean, you have some wiggle room there, a little bit. And I don't know how your market studies have indicated things, but you know, you got six to ten PM. That could be six to eight. I don't know, maybe not. Um, Saturday hours, eight to eight, maybe eight to six instead. I, again, I don't know, but just losing a couple hours every day of the week would be, have an impact on the budget, especially with this margin you've got here that, um, you're not that far off, you know? It's not that far off. And if you get a little more revenue because it's better ridership, it's, it may be more doable. Uh, anyway, I just wanted to point that out. I didn't, you know, it's not really a question, I guess.
I should, I should probably warn the council that, um, increased ridership actually, um, affects our federal funding. So the more, I mean, we want more riders, obviously, but then our federal funding goes down by the number that we go up. So, um, so having more riders won't fix our budget issues, just as a, as an FYI. It'll help a little bit.
That's how the state budget works.
Yeah, it's not a one-for-one, a dollar-for-dollar, but.
Yeah.
There is, you know, kind of an offset, then the feds just offset it. Um, but, you know, I just want to put that out there so you guys know.
Thank you, Terry. Um, Counselor Prushel, did you have any other questions or comments?
Uh, the only thing was, I, I did mention to the city manager last year, early this year, about a crosstown express idea going, you know, straight from Woodman's over the, straight over to the gateway and Walmart shopping areas, just using, you know, Highway eighty-one basically, and Madison Road. Just to, because at the time, in the old routes, the existing routes rather, there was just this huge gap and there was a lot of complaints about just running these long loops to get somewhere that it was just more immediate. And there were complaints about access from the east side to Woodman's for some reason. I don't know why that really was going on, but there were, there was some comments about it. I think you heard, you mentioned that too. Um, anyway, that was just an idea I threw out to the city manager and I never heard about it again, so. I don't know, if you guys probably did talk about it.
So the, the very first model that we did had an express route. It went from, um, went straight from Woodman's to Walmart, right?
I thought it was Woodman's to the clinic.
Woodman's to the clinic and back. And we tried to, I called it a rocker route where it follows the same route there and back. And, um, if we kept that, we couldn't get into the neighborhoods because I know from experience, James knows from experience, that in Beloit, if the bus is in about two blocks away, people aren't gonna ride it. So it was, you know, um, the original plan was on all of the kind of the main roads. But, um, just like what we did with, what happened with the routes the last time they were changed, they went out of the neighborhoods and went more on the main roads and we lost riders that way. So, um, and the goal is to make sure that our riders are served, or our, our community is served. Um, so we did keep it there and then as we played around with the routes, with the budgetary constraints, in order to hit all of the areas that the, that the community wanted us to hit, we weren't able to keep that. So what we did by connecting those two inner loops with the, um, outer loop, there essentially is kind of a, a crosstown connection there. Um, so we tried to compromise that way.
And, and you cut the time out of that loop process too, of that connecting transfer process, a lot.
Right.
So, I mean, that was important, so. And I understand that you have to have so many, to set a guidelines as far as how, how far apart you have, you know, be to get the, you know, federal funding qualified, so. Yeah, I get all that. And I just wondered, I just wondered, you know, and I thought there was a good, probably good reasons it wasn't gonna work. Um, but this, this new plan has really filled in some of the glaring problems that were with the previous one. And I'm really glad, and as far as I'm concerned, the sooner the better, this is, because I think this is what people need, we need to get there, so, thanks.
Any other comments or questions, Counselor Prushel? Okay, I would just like to say a special thank you.
You guys did a good job. Thank you, Terry.
Yeah, I just want to say, um, um, on behalf of our council, thank you, Terry and James. And you just had to hit the ground running in your new role, so, thank you. And just thanks for all your hard work and your presentation this evening. With that said, the workshop is done for this afternoon. Counselor Blakely, I'm sorry, I'm gonna back up a little bit. Did you have some words you wanted to offer?
Um, sorry to interrupt, um, uh, Council President Duncan. Um, Counselor Keys.
Oh, Counselor Keys.
I had a couple other questions pop up, if that's okay, before we.
Um, if you can just, Counselor Keys, if you could just make them brief, that'd be great. Go ahead with your first question.
Sure, first question, um, came from a resident who moved from out of town, just inquiring about bus shelters. Um, so my question is, do we have them? Are they part of the plan, um, at some of like the busier places?
Okay, can Terry answer that question, then we'll go on to the second, okay? Go ahead, Terry.
Yeah, so we have, uh, bus shelters at, um, various locations throughout the city. James has put together a list of shelters that need to be moved as part of this plan, so we can work with DPW to get those moved and get the, um, cement pads poured and things like that. So we especially have the shelters, uh, where there are seniors. Um, so at, uh, a lot of the senior living places, we have the shelters. We have shelters at, um, Woodman's, um, is there one at Aldi's? The bench. So we do have a number of, of shelters. Um, I just don't know where all of them are located by heart.
And then your second question, Counselor Keys?
Um, has, has there been any discussion, um, or thought of like a, a park-and-ride type situation? It would be like a partnership with the, uh, different industries and especially with businesses downtown. I've heard a lot from the community of, and, um, concerns about congestion with like the commute and as you mentioned, White Avenue and going downtown and less cars is, um, and on the road is less congestion. Um, so I just wanted to bring that up coming from different communities that had that, uh, to see if that was, um, a rare discussion.
We haven't had discussions on that, but we're certainly open to it. I think it's a really good idea to, you know, cut down on the congestion and we'd be willing to, you know, work with whatever, you know, people suggest to see, to make it happen. If, if that's what the residents want and it makes sense, then we'll make sure that we're at the table.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, James and, and Terry. We appreciate you, um, giving us this wonderful presentation tonight. I'm sure we'll be hearing more. I know this is not the last time that, and because with all the changes and all of that. And so we look forward to hearing that. So with that said, the workshop is done for this evening. Good night, everyone. This concludes our meeting for, our city council meeting for tonight.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.